Planning Board members, township officials and professionals, please unmute yourselves.
Good evening, everybody. I'm calling to order the meeting, the planning board meeting for June 9th. And I'd like, are we going to stand and please salute the flag? I pledge allegiance. Now, Secretary. Mr. De Palma? Mr. Renan?
Here.
Mr. Lauer?
Here.
Mr. Mamacas?
Here.
Mr. Marucci?
Here.
Mr. Schmitz?
Here.
Mr. Lenning?
Here.
Mr. Petty? Chairwoman Cannon?
Here.
Mr. Sardillo?
Here.
Ms. Sawant?
Here.
Ms. Shapiro?
Here.
Mr. Lavallo?
Here.
Mr. Hart? Adequate notice of this meeting of the Old Bridge Township Planning Board has provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, at least forty-eight hours prior to the commencement of the meeting by prominently posting in the municipal complex an announcement giving the time, date, location, and agenda of this meeting mailing such announcement to the Home News and Tribune and filing a copy of such announcement with the municipal court. Okay, well, may I ask our host, our planning, our planner Venus Sawant to say if she has any comments or instructions?
Sure. Thank you, Chairman, Chairwoman Cannon. For, good evening all. For panelists, please make sure that your face is in the middle of your viewing window, not too low, not too high. Ensure that there's ample light falling on your face from the side of the front. No lights or windows to your back. Planning Board members will be unmuted during the first half of the meeting when they will be required to vote on other agenda items. The Planning Board Attorney, the Planning Board Chairman, Planning Board Secretary, and the Court Reporter will remain unmuted throughout the meeting. Everyone else will be muted once the presentation for the application begins. The applicants' professionals will be asked to turn on their video and unmute themselves in the order in which they will testify. For all residents, please press star nine to raise your hands when the public commentary period starts. During the public commentary period, I will announce the last four digit of the caller's phone number to come forward, announce their name and address. I will also announce the last four digit of the next caller's phone number so that he or she knows they are next in line. You will only be able to hear the residents. I will share my screen to display any exhibits presented by the professional. Please be mindful that there is a thirty-second time lag in the presentation. The meeting information will be displayed on the screen multiple times during the meeting so that any resident who wishes to call and join the meeting can do so. Thank you.
Okay, we have the minutes for March 3rd, 2020 to approve. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll move it.
Okay, moved by Mr. Matru, Mr. Chief. Mr. Lauer? Roll call, please. De Palma?
Yeah.
Mr. Renan?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Mamacas?
Yes.
Mr. Marucci?
Yes.
Mr. Schmitz?
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Petty? Chairman Cannon?
Yes.
Okay, and then we have the minutes for May 19th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Marucci, roll call, please. Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Renan?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Mamacas?
Yes.
Mr. Marucci?
Yes.
Mr. Schmitz?
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Chairman Cannon?
Yes.
Okay, now we have a discussion of the 2020 annual report from the zoning board. Vina, are you going to talk to us about that?
Yeah, I can, I can brief the board with it. So basically, the municipal land use law requires that the zoning board prepares an annual report at the end of every year. This year, due to the pandemic, the report has come in slightly late. The report was ready at the beginning of the year, but because we didn't have meetings, it was delayed slightly. But basically, this report is nothing but a synopsis or a summary of what happened at the zoning board last year. The zoning board received approximately thirty-seven applications, fifteen applications that were merely for bulk variances related to single-family homes. And then there were twenty-two devariance and site plan review applications that were heard by the zoning board. So this report actually goes into detail and describes what, what really happened, gives details about each application. I think for the planning board, this is like a guideline or this is like a policy document which helps us evaluate if there is anything we need to change in our zoning ordinance or is there any zone in the, in the township that really needs reevaluated for bulk variances, for standards. So the second page of the report actually gives you a better idea of type of applications were filed. And I think most of them, there was nothing that you could just zero in on that, you know, this needs to be fixed or this is an issue. It last to last year, that is in 2018, when we saw the report, it was clear that the township had to amend its floor area ratio definition because there were a lot of homeowners that were coming in front of the zoning board because of the way our floor area definition was crafted in the ordinance. We went ahead and we amended that. And now you notice that there are very few applications last year that were asking for a floor area ratio related to a single-family home. The only one thing that I have observed in all the reviews and the applications that I have reviewed, and I'm sure Nicole will agree with that, is our not, our five zone and our R six zone needs to be reevaluated for bulk standards. We often notice that these are lots that are fairly undersized and non-conforming compared to what the zone requires. And so most of the times when a house has to be built on these undersized lots, the resident has to go through the zoning board, but a careful evaluation has to be done. So as the next step in the post-pandemic or after the post-pandemic phase is over, I will be looking at those zones. But otherwise, the devariances that were asked were not specific to a zone or does not really, you know, if there isn't a need to change something with a zone based on the applications that came in. And if the report is in detail, it talks about each application. So if you go page by page, there is more information on each, the application that came in.
Okay, I just was wondering, since I think if, I just reviewed it quickly, but I think there were only two variances that were denied. There were several that were withdrawn. And so is that just a normal, or I mean, I know you said you're going to look at some of those bulk variances to see whether you need to change the descriptions in the zone. But is that sort of a normal? I don't remember that being so minimal before. You know, where, where there were only two that were, you know, not, not approved.
It is not typical. It just varies, you know. Some of them that were withdrawn were withdrawn without prejudice. Some of them were not even heard when they find out that they need a lot of variances or if their profession, applicant's professional thing that what we are asking for is not easy to get from the board, some of them just withdraw. They don't come for the public hearing. So those were, those type of applications that were withdrawn.
Oh, okay. Anybody else from the board have any comments or questions? Okay, well, thank you very much. We'll then go on to the public hearing for the master plan reexamination amendment. Vina, do you want to go over that?
Yeah, sure. So, good evening, board members. This is a public hearing for the amendment of the master plan reexamination report. As you may recall, I had at the last meeting given a brief description as to why we were doing so. But again, to reiterate, on November 6th, 2019, New Jersey Senate voted to approve Senate Bill 606. The bill amends the municipal land use law and the local redevelopment and housing law to require municipalities to account for current and future electric vehicle charging stations. It encourages municipalities to identify existing and potential electric vehicle charging infrastructure locations for these charging stations as part of their master plan reexamination report. The law encourages development of electric charging infrastructure in commercial districts near public transportation facilities and public rest stops. Additionally, it amends the local redevelopment and housing law to account for the proposed locations of electric vehicle charging as part of the redevelopment plan. So the actual amendment to the master plan reexamination is on a report that was distributed among board members. Also, a copy of the report was available on our township's website. The amendment is on page nineteen and it is very specific to electric charging stations. It just says that we need to evaluate our commercial corridors, like for example, Route 9, Route 18, Route 35, where we have a lot of commercial activity as well as township-owned properties or commuter parking lots to see if we can add electric charging stations there. So that, that's, that one paragraph relates to essentially encouraging us to go forward because once it is a part of the master plan, which is now required by the bill, I can go ahead and create an ordinance that allows electric charging stations as private developments.
Vina, there's something wrong with the audio because we're, we're missing chunks of your presentation. Or I'm, I don't know. Can everybody else hear everything?
Somebody in.
Yeah, we're, big chunks are just, we're not hearing you.
Do you want me to repeat it?
No, I mean, I think we've got the gist of what you're talking about. If anybody, does anybody else want her to go back over it again?
No.
No, we wanted to just make you aware of that, that it is your, you are.
I'll see what I can fix on this end. But if there are any questions, I can definitely address those.
No, but I, I seem to hear everything well.
Oh, are you? Maybe it's just me. Did everybody else hear her? All right, well, maybe it's just me.
I, I hear Vina very well. So I do, she was breaking up a little bit at the end, but the majority of her, her statements were heard well.
Okay, well, does anybody have any questions or comments?
I do, this is counting. So, I mean, as Vina and I, you know, I've had discussions and I think I've also, I've spoken about this at council as well. And I definitely think this is something that we do need to start to move forward, right? Electric cars are going, are coming. They are coming very rapidly. I mean, for those who are driving around, you see Teslas, you see other electric vehicles. I definitely think this is something that we need to address. The sooner we do this, the better it's going to be. You know, especially as we look to develop more and more of the township. You know, let's look to develop that in the right way. And I definitely think this is the right step forward.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any comments? Okay, the only thing I had heard of questions regarding who, who absorbs the cost for the implementation? And then do they, not being familiar at all with electric cars, does the user pay a fee in order to use these stations?
It, so the first question, who installs it? Typically, when it's on a private property, they install those charging stations. Now, in the township, when it's on a public property, there are a lot of funds available. And NJDP, for example, runs a program paid to plug. And if the township is interested in putting an electric charging station in a township-owned property, then they provide funds to be able to do so. If it is a private developer, like, for example, if we have a development coming in at the application, pre-application meeting generally, we, if we think that is an ideal location for a meeting, and typically the developer would agree. Once we have this in our master plan and we have an ordinance that requires, there are many towns, what they do is they create an ordinance. And they say, if you have between fifty to hundred parking spaces on a commercial property, then three percent of them have to be electric charging stations. There are some towns, those are the towns that want to go aggressively with electric charging stations. There are some towns that say that you could put in one percent of your parking lot with electric charging stations, but at the same time, you need to provide electric conduit for future connections to ten other studs. So it depends. It varies, different people handle it differently. If you actually go to other states, like if you go to Texas, California, they're much, much more aggressive with the ordinances. New Jersey has just introduced this and is making it a part of the master plan and the land use element. So we'll have to see how that acts. But we are really inclined to encourage private developers and also encourage such facilities on public properties.
Okay, thank you. No other questions or comments? Okay, now we need to take a vote on this to move it forward. Okay, do I have a motion to approve this?
I'll move it.
Okay, move, Mr. Schmitz?
Yes.
Second, Mr. De Palma? Roll call, please. Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Renan?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Mamacas?
Yes.
Mr. Marucci?
Yes.
Mr. Schmitz?
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Chairman Cannon?
Yes.
Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
Okay, and then we, all right, so that's, we, now it goes back to the council. That's all we need to do, right?
Yes.
Give our approval on the resolution. Okay.
Yes.
So now we go on to the one and only application we have for the evening, which is application 09-2020P, 764 Texas Road LLC, Block 21002, Lot 2, minor site plan with C variants. And we have Mr. Himmelham is going to present the application.
Yes, Chairwoman Cannon, good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay. First of all, I want to thank Chairwoman Cannon, I just want to thank the staff and the board for accommodating the Zoom meetings. And the applicant very much appreciates, you know, the township's willingness to conduct these meetings and obviously conduct your business. So as you know, this application is being presented by 764 Texas Road LLC. They are the applicant and as Chairwoman Cannon indicated, the applicant is seeking a minor site plan and C bulk variance approval. And for the record, the property is identified as Block 21002, Lot 2. And of course, that's here in the township of Old Bridge. And the property is located by its name. And the property is located by its name at 764 Texas Road. As you will hear this evening, the applicant, as you know from our waiver hearing, is proposing the conversion of the existing dwelling, which is a residential, currently a residence, residential residence to a professional accounting office. The property is located in the Economic Development Opportunity Zone 3, EDO 3. And as pointed out by your planner, Vina, in her memorandum of June 8, that, that use is permitted in the zone. The property contains approximately 28,911 square feet and is approximately 0.66 acres. The existing residence consists of 1,500 square feet and approximately 440 square feet in the garage. The proposed office use will, will seek to combine that for a total of 1,940 square feet. As you know from the application materials, it's the applicant's desire that the existing residential structure will be utilized for its office, its accounting office, and the driveway will be necessary for the parking that we're providing. And as you know, the applicant proposes to provide six parking spaces, while 13 parking spaces are required in the ordinance, and thus, a bulk C variance for the parking is necessary. And of course, there are other improvements that'll be described as well. In Vina's memorandum, she does an excellent job going through the zoning requirements and the various bulk variances that are required. Many of them are pre-existing non-conformity, and we will go through those in detail. Also, the applicant will be addressing this evening the, the comments and the proposed, I guess, conditions that Vina has outlined in her memo, as well as the engineering comments in that memo. And also, there's a memo from the, from Mr. Hart, from the Bureau of Fire Prevention, which we will address those memos. And of course, from Gary Lovell, who was the conservation officer with regard to the tree removal requirements, if any. With that said, Jerome McCannan, I don't have any further introductory comments. I have two witnesses that we're going to present tonight. One is a representative of the applicant and the owner of the, of the, of the accounting firm. That's Kumar Majdumar. And then, of course, we have our engineer, Sri Kattawala, who, of course, was here for the waiver hearing as well. And if the board doesn't have any questions at this time, Jerome McCannan, I would like to move our first witness.
Okay, I think if you just go to your first witness, and then we can address any comments.
Sure, be happy to. Kumar, are you able to, do you have the video on, and you able to hear everybody?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I think we need to swear in the witness.
Swear him in, yes, correct.
Yes, would you please, please raise your hand, state your name, spell your last name?
Kumar Majdumar.
And do you swear the testimony you're going to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kumar, just for the record, could you just state your affiliation to the applicant? So, the board understands that, first question.
Yeah, I am the owner of 764 Texas Road LLC.
Very good. And can you just briefly describe what you would like the board to consider and what you're proposing with, for this property, please?
I run a small accounting firm, and, you know, I have three employees. And, you know, we have most of our clients in different states. They are in New Jersey, but also in New York and Connecticut and California, Florida, a lot of other places. And most of the work is done through internet connections. So, that is, that's what I want to use. I have been renting my office for last since 2050 Gross Office Park on Route 9. And, you know, I want to move my office into this building.
Very good. And so, you said the, it's your, it's your view that you have a back, you approximately three employees? And how about, how about visitors on a daily basis? What would you, what would you say that approximates to?
Not on daily basis, but if at all, like, two, three, you know, visitors during the tax season. After that, nobody really visits other than the mailman.
Okay, and your hours of operation generally?
9:30 to 5:00.
And is that during the week, Monday to Friday?
Yes, yes.
And you open on Saturdays also?
Only by, only if the client wants to see me. That time only, I am in the office, not my employees.
Fair enough. So, it's your basic intention to relocate your, your CPA practice at this property, correct?
Yes.
Should the board approve this application?
Yes.
Okay. Chairman McCannan, I don't have any further questions of the applicant, but the board or your professionals might.
Okay, Vina, do you have any questions?
Actually, related to the operation, I think Mr. Kumar has addressed all the questions. Is there any, do you plan on increasing your staff? Or it will be limited to the three employees you have? Do you intend to?
Especially because of this Corona situation, we have learned to, in fact, work remotely. Right now, we are all, nobody is going to the office. We are all working from our homes. So, I can expand, you know, I can hire, you know, staff in Indiana or Ohio or California, anywhere I can hire. But down the road, you know, if I can, in my office area, I'll come back to you if I can, you know, if not required at this time.
Sure, thank you, thank you, that's all.
Nicole, did you have anything? Nicole?
Oh, Madam Chairman, I have nothing for this witness.
Okay, thank you. There aren't any other questions.
And yeah, okay, thank you, Chairman McCannan. If, I guess, Kumar, you can sit tight, but I'm, we're gonna, we may have other questions if the board wants. We can always bring you back. Chairman McCannan, I would like then to call Mr. Kattawala, who is our professional engineer, to have him sworn and qualified as our engineer in this application, please.
Okay.
Sir, would you please state your name, spell your last name?
Vina J. Kottawaala, S-H-R-I-N-A-T-H. KOT.
Oh, I'm sorry.
K-O-T-D-A-W-A-L-A.
Thank you. And do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening, Sri, how are you? Can you hear everyone?
Yes, I can hear everyone.
Great, thank you. It's my understanding that you have prepared the minor site plan on behalf of the applicant that was submitted in this matter, is that correct?
I did, yes.
Okay. What I would ask you to do initially is to, first of all, do you have any exhibits that you, you're going to refer to?
Yeah, I can start with the exhibit Vina just posted when we, we started this meeting.
Okay, Vina, do you want to have that marked? I think that's a colored rendering of what was submitted, is that correct, Sri?
Yes, that's correct.
Vina, do you want to have that marked?
Okay.
I think, yes, we should mark that.
Okay, can we just identify what it is that's being marked?
Yes.
This is 2015 NJDP aerial photograph, and we put the site and the zoning information on it. So, we get just an overview of what's the site, where it's located, and you get the idea of surrounding.
Okay, well, Sri, why don't you, why don't you begin your, your testimony outline? And if you would take us through what the applicant's proposing, and then we can address what is in the professional memorandum as well. Thank you.
Can, can we just get the brief qualifications?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I'll, I'll, I'll ask that. Can you just go over your CV, your professional licenses that you hold, and whether or not you've testified before other zoning and planning boards in the state of New Jersey, please?
Okay, I have like a NGP license since 1998, and I have testified multiple times in front of the Old Bridge Board, as well as the other townships in the state of New Jersey. And I do practice land use engineering since 1995.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman McCannan. Okay, Sri, you may proceed.
Yes, if you see the site, like, it's almost like the boundary of Marlboro Township, just like a north of Costco. The Costco building is, we can see that there's a Block 176, 502, that shopping center and a parking lot. We can see that it's right behind our property. Or I would say, like, we are just east of Texas Road and Route 9 intersection. There is like a commercial, we have like an auto body shop kind of car repairs on like Lot 1, Block 24. And we are just right next to it. And on the east side of the property, when we go towards the mall entrance, not the mall, the shops at Old Bridge entrance, we have a wetlands, you can see the forested area, no one has removed the trees. And that's how we are located. And on the site itself, we are about 2/3 of an acre, 0.66 acre. And there is existing house, which measures about 1,970 square feet. And applicant is planning to convert their whole entire house into an office building. So, now, I'll go back to, not the exhibit, but the site plan. You, you may have a copy of site plan in with you, so I can just talk about the site plan, unless you have any question about the site location or any other things, which is related to more of a site location. Vina, would you put that, or I can share my screen, how does it work? The site plan.
Give me two minutes, I'm going to pull that up. I can, I'm not sure if you have the sharing ability, but I can, just give me one second, bear with me.
Okay, that's, that's, that's good enough. Okay, as you see, there is a, if you look at the left side of the map, which is the existing condition map, and the right side is our proposed conditions, we are not making reality any changes in the footprint of the building, as well as the driveway. Only thing we are doing is converting the driveway, which had a gravel area driveway behind the house, into three parking spaces, along with ADA compatible ramp entering into the office building as required by the architectural rules. So, those are the only changes we are making externally. And kind of delineating six parking spaces, three in the front and three in the back. With about 18 square feet, we are converting, we are adding an impervious surface for the parking space, and we are adding ADA compatible ramp on the back. So, those are the two exterior changes we are making on the property. Everything else will be interior change. And, and then, this requires some variances. I'll go through the list of variances we are asking, we are actually asking, but it's all because of existing. And we are proposing a sign 10 feet away from the property line, which will be now, as one of the comments we had about kind of put a sign, which is not acrylic sign, but a brick sign, kind of a brick messory sign, we definitely, we will do it, and applicant is ready for it. So, we will not have a problem in putting that sign. But other than that, we are trying to basically avoid any disturbance on a site due to wetlands located on east side of the property. And there is a, a small ditch along, along the Texas Road, so between, between property line and the Texas Road. So, that's how whole site plan is created, where we do minimal disturbance to the site. And not a single tree will be removed for this process. If you see all the hatch areas, they are existing. One, we have a mix of, if we, if we start from Texas Road, we have a half of the driveway is concrete and half is asphalt. And behind the house, everything is a gravel coated driveway. So, we will not make any changes there. Only thing I had a recommendation was to convert the ADA parking space into a concrete or asphalt paved. Definitely, we will do that, we will, we'll pave that parking space, provide a pad as well as a ramp. Other than that, we are not asking any changes outside. And whatever the variance is coming out is because of the existing conditions, as well as the new parking spaces we created. Instead of two existing, we had a two parking spaces, we are going to now make it six out of the current disturbances. And if I go through the chart, I'll, I'll just go through the quickly, the wet variances we are asking. One is number of parking spaces, we need 13 spaces for 1,970 square feet. And we will be providing six. And as Mr. Kumar testified, we don't need more than six parking spaces. The other thing is about the parking stall length, which is 20 feet by 10. We are providing nine by 18, and I think it's a sufficient nine by 18 for this particular application. We will not be looking for like larger cars or trucks coming more often here, that they will require 10 by 20 parking spaces. And then, there's a list of waivers. If you want, I can just go and read through it, or Vina has already written in her comment later, and we are aware of all those waivers. But if board wants to know, I can recite it. Let me know whenever you have any questions in this matter. But, and then, we.
Sri, if I might just interrupt you. So, the waivers, I guess, are in Vina's memorandum, I guess, Table 3. Are, are there any, are there, are there any items that we are looking not to seek waivers of that are referenced in the, in her Table 3? Or are we seeking waivers for all of that?
We're seeking waivers for all that.
Okay, very good.
And then, I can go through the comments, where basically, couple of comments, which is where we definitely asked for a waiver. One of the comment was sidewalk placing along the Texas Road. I would leave it to the Middlesex County review when we go through, because it's a county road. So, I will, I will, because it's very hard to put a sidewalk up in there because of the wetland situation. Right there, there's a ditch, and we would like to seek a waiver there and not to place a sidewalk along the Texas Road. The, the location of a sign, I might have to move the sign towards the driveway. As if, if it's within the wetlands buffer, we may not be able to put a sign there. So, I have to put very close to the existing driveway, which is entering into the site. So, that change will happen. It's kind of a part of condition, a part of like a condition of approval, we will, we will request that waiver. And all the utility permit, we will seek from the OBMIA. We have a septic system here, we will, we will update the septic if it's needed. But at this moment, we had a certificate from a septic inspector, the septic is running fine. The existing sewer flow is about roughly about 500 gallons per day, versus what we are anticipating from offices only about 250 gallons or even less than that. So, impact on the septic would be much less, requirement for water is much less. And I don't see any problem with you using the same utilities on the site without making any changes or any upgrades for the office space.
I'm sorry, if I can just jump in, I wasn't quite understand, standing when we're talking about the signage. You mentioned something that we would be requesting as a condition of approval. Could you maybe just repeat that? I apologize, I did not quite understand what you meant.
Yeah, what we'll do is the, the location of sign, which we proposed, may not get approved without DEP permit, and we are trying for this application because we are only adding few square footage here and there. We are trying to avoid going to DEP and go through a long process. The sign, I, I might have to move it very close to the driveway where there is existing disturbances on the ground. Hence, what we call it like kind of redevelopment of disturbed area.
Thank you, I apologize, thank you.
And if you have any other questions, we will go through. There is another letter from fire chief, and we will meet with them. And we will meet with them and do whatever he asks us to do. I don't see any problem with doing whatever the comments he made on it. Only thing is we cannot widen the driveway or we cannot provide a separate like a fire lane or but the areas which will not be utilized for parking spaces, we will mark no parking signs. With the yellow striping and no parking lettering on the, on the driveway, so no one will park in the middle.
Uh, Sri, if I could just go back in, in Venus comment. Her memo, her comment number six under the planning comments, can you just address the wetland and transition area? I know uh, she's indicating um, that the applicant should, should address that particularly as it relates to the proposed parking. And I know we've discussed your uh, your suggestion on permitting, potentially permitting that with the D P. So if you could just go over that.
Yes, uh, only D P allows us to redevelop the existing disturbed areas. So that's what exactly we are doing, all our parking spaces except I have a front, there's a little, small amount of square feet which is going into the disturbed area of grass lawn. I have to check it if I can get through permit by rule. If I cannot get it, then we will, we will obtain definitely a permit from D P. We don't have a choice for the ADA ramp which we are putting on a back. I'll just, I have to do is get a delineation and put a fifty feet line and see that anything is within that line is, is permitted or not. If it's not permitted, uh, we, we have to obtain a D P permit. Which is easily payable, but it's just the process we have to go through.
Very good, and the um, also with regard um, to uh, Venus comments. Her item two under her planning comments under buffer. She's recommending adding some shrubbery around the parking spaces to provide screening along that area, is the applicant agreeable to that?
Yes, we will, we will, we'll provide a shrubbery so we don't have a headlight going into the, like, because all the parking spaces are facing on a west, we will not see a, sorry, yeah, it's in a west, we will not see any headlight coming toward Texas Road. But even though we will provide a screening so people don't see the car directly, we'll put some shrubbery there, definitely.
Very good, and as far as um, the potential loading area, Vina also points out in her item number four under her planning comments, uh, that a loading space may not be required, but can you just address that?
Yeah, typical office use, uh, they will not require a loading zone, uh, the kind of use he has, the applicant. Uh, and hence what we see that we don't need a loading zone here. If he orders the stuff, he has to be assured that it's, wh- whichever the delivery vehicle comes in, should be able to pull out. Not get the tractor trailer here.
Very good, and uh, as far as lighting, I know uh, Vina again had a, a comment in her report item in her planning comments number seven with regard to proposed lighting. And is it, is it your understanding the applicant will comply with the lighting requirement?
Yes, in our architectural plant, the lighting we will provide that will that will suffice to provide enough lighting which will meet the township's minimum. And it will stay between minimum and maximum candlelight needed to be for the parking lot.
Very good, and as far as the other, just rounding out the other planning comments, you, you addressed the sidewalks and the signage. Uh, and, and the, uh, the only other comment Vina had was uh, the bicycle racks and we're seeking a waiver for that.
That's correct, we are not anticipating uh, someone to come on a bike with a heavily traffic road and I so that's, that's the reason we are asking waiver in here.
Very good, and moving on to the engineering comments and recommendations, is there any or any of those recommendations, some of them are dovetail into Venus comments. But are there any of those recommendations and or potential conditions that we, that the applicant will not comply with? Or are we good with all those?
No, we, we will comply with it, but there are a couple of comments which they say we need a driveway not less than twenty feet, we will ask for a waiver.
Fair enough. And you addressed the, uh, the Middlesex County Planning Board and Old Bridge M U A will obviously have to file that. Should the board act favorably on the application, you address the fire. Uh, Mr. Hart's memorandum of uh, June second, well, you said we'd comply. And then you want to address uh, the memorandum regarding from Mr. Um Lovao on the tree conservation and removal?
So, so we are not removing any trees, what we are doing is we'll be planting the trees. Not a planting, but planting the shrubs and some evergreens to see that we get some buffer screening from the neighbors.
Very good, uh, Sri, have you covered everything? Did you want to add anything further about the applicant's proposal or have you, are you comfortable that we've covered all the ground?
Yeah, we, we, I'm comfortable that we covered all the ground, there, there may be a need for some railings for ADA ramp. But, but that will be coming through the architectural plan when this we submit for building permit.
Very good, uh, Chair McCannan, I don't have any further direct questions of our engineer. But the board and or your professionals might, and obviously, we're here to answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you, um, Vina, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes, I have actually a couple of comments and questions. Just to um, let the board know, actually, the existing use of the property is of a single family home. And uh, the property is located in the E D O three zone, which does not permit uh, single family homes or any residences. So it's an uh, existing non-conforming use by converting the building into a professional office. Actually, um, the project is kind of furthering the intent of the municipal land use law. The municipal land use law states that um, when there is an existing non-conforming use, municipal boards must continually balance the uh, important goal of bringing such existing non-conformities to conformity. So that way, this project really furthers the municipal land use law. Uh, with all my comments, I think Sri has uh, addressed all of them except for the refuse area. So Sri, um, I know this is a commercial property, there is no outdoor refuse area proposed. Uh, our ordinance requires that we have an uh, area or some refuse collection. If you have it indoor, I would like you to testify and give us more information on how refuse will be collected. It's an office use, it is not a generator of huge um, refuse, but we would like to know how that will be handled on site.
Yeah, it will be stored inside.
All right, so you would need, I believe, a waiver for that. With the sign, uh, I had a, a comment, uh, so board members. The sign that was originally proposed was uh, acrylic uh, backlit. The zoning officer and I have often noticed that over a period of time, these uh, the acrylic lights with a storm, snowstorm, they crack and uh, they tend to look uh, they're not as pleasing over a period of time. So my recommendation was, given the location of this property, it's right across Sharps at Old Bridge. And it is at the entrance of, close to the entrance of Marlboro Center Shopping Center. Uh, I just recommended that they have a masonry, a small monument sign. The sign is comply, it complies with the township's signage ordinance, it's just that it a, a concrete sign would be more aesthetically pleasing at the applicant has agreed uh, to change the design. I would uh, recommend that should the board uh, act favorably on this application. Uh, the applicant's professional works with my office to come up with a sign that is acceptable.
I, I, that's fine, we, we talked to client about it and he, 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 he will comply with this suggestion and request.
And the last comment was the landscaping. Typically, when uh, I review site plans uh, for non-residential developments, I usually have a huge section on landscaping. In this case, it's unique because our township ordinance says that on a non-residential property, if you have less than twen- if you have more than twenty parking spaces, then you need to comply with, uh, I think it's like A through H. But in this case, because it's a, a small parking lot, even if the applicant would comply with the parking requirement, they would need thirteen parking spaces, which is less than twenty. So the regular de- design standards for landscaping doesn't apply to this um, uh, this property. I, I just had a recommendation that the parking area be screened with shrubbery, which the applicant has agreed. So I don't have any further questions with the sidewalk. Um, I, I mean, uh, it, they do require a waiver from the design standards of the E D O three ordinance. But again, it is along Texas Road, so the county has jurisdiction uh, and will have a say on the sidewalks. So I would actually defer to Nicole to chime in on any comments related to the sidewalk. But that's all from my end.
Okay, thank you, Nicole, do you have any comments and?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, um, the only comment I had is, you know, uh, Vina and I had a pre-application meeting with the applicant and his professionals, um, this uh, quite a while ago. Um, a couple of months ago on this application and we had made them aware of some wetlands on the adjacent property that were delineated. Um, I think it's important for record keeping, although we were, were pretty assured that there is no disturbance in the wetlands transition area associated with the wetlands on the adjacent property. We would like to see the, that um, transposed onto this plan. Um, and then the associated transition area waiver then placed on the plan as well. Um, I do agree that it's Middlesex County uh, along Texas Road, um, that would and, and I, I, I believe that they're gonna require that sidewalk there. Um, I know that ditch is along the frontage. Um, but I've seen them in the past still require it. Um, so that's probably a hurdle that the applicant has to go through um, to seek relief on that. Um, other than that, you know, I just think that there is an importance on getting um, the, the wetlands um, that are delineated on the adjacent property on the plans and certainly my office can provide that plan uh, to the applicant's engineer. Once a request has been made. Um, and lastly, I know that, you know, a lot of the waivers I had listed were also listed on Venus section of the report. Um, the only thing I just want to confirm is that a signed and sealed survey is um, is submitted to my office. Other than that, I have no other questions or comments.
Okay, thank you, um, Mr. Lovalo, did you have any comments?
Okay, there we go, um, you have, you are in receipt of the report, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, is there anything in that report that you have a question on or um, you didn't agree with? Uh, basically, the um, the trees in the back were, were subject to extent, probably, there was a lot of fill placed uh, over the tree roots in the back proper.
Yes, yes, yes.
The eight trees were killed as a result of that. Uh, so there will be some true removal because they are dead and dead trees do represent a risk and they need to be removed.
Okay.
Uh, based on the fact that the trees were damaged by the fill, um, I'm gonna require that you replace them based on the ordinance and the chart that I put in the letter, uh, looking at the diameters of the trees. You're gonna have to replace the, the commensurate amount of trees based on those diameters.
I, I, yeah, I got it. Uh, the applicant hasn't done anything, the filled material was placed by a previous owner. And I'm sure it was at least like a few years ago. So if we get certain waiver, we make, yes, we would do the replacement trees, but do we have to follow the, exactly the chart? Because that will be too many trees, but we can have, we can plant trees, like we, we, we will propose a plan and, and it will be under review from your office and if you like it, otherwise, if you want more trees, we will add it up. I can do that way, our landscape architect will design something. And we will submit to you guys and then you review and if you say no, we need five more trees or eight more trees, we will add more trees as well as the variety of trees.
Yeah, we have a, a, an approved list of acceptable trees to plant, so you can get that from, from the engineering office. Or I can send it to you and uh, you just go from that list.
Sure, I'll, I'll do that, I'll prepare a plan, replacement plan, I'll submit to you.
Very good.
And, and then we'll go from there and whatever is needed, we will do it.
Okay, that, that wraps up my comments.
Okay, thank you, and is Mr. Hart here or no?
He was.
Yes, I have no comments, I'm satisfied with that.
Okay, thank you, uh, okay, now the board, any questions or comments from the board?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Maruch.
Just for the record, uh, is any part of this application, including but not limited to wetlands, signage, drives, walks, does any of it encroach into uh, Marlboro or Monmouth County?
No.
Just for the record, okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I guess this would be for the applicant's engineer.
Yes.
Uh, you said the trash would be ho- held inside.
Yes.
Uh, eventually, it's gonna have to be picked up, would that be at, at the curb on Texas Road or you're gonna haul away yourself?
Uh, I would defer it to applicant how he would like to, because eventually someone has to take it in a barrel and bring it to the road for the pickup places. So, so I would, I would see owner is, either it is a private hauler, I'm not aware of the fact that, or who will haul it out from the office. So the owner, owner has to make an arrangement, definitely.
It's gonna go to the road then?
Yes, yeah, but they will bring it to the road and uh, just before the time of the pickup.
Thank you, and the, my other question is that, that most southerly law, property line of, of your uh
Yes.
Lot.
Yeah.
That's right on the Middlesex Monmouth County line?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Uh, okay. And uh, this, this building is gonna be, the whole building is gonna be strictly for accounting only?
Yes, the owner has testified that he will be only using for accounting.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, anybody else? Have any comments or questions? Okay, well, um, our attorney, are you gonna be able to sum up all the, I mean, I know you can, but the, all the variances and the waivers or somehow identify them so we know exactly what we're voting on?
Yes, Miss Chairwoman, I, I, I believe I can, uh, the applicant is requesting, let me just get that part of my notes in front of me. Based on my notes, they are, aside from the existing non-conformities, they're exist, requesting two variances. One for parking spaces, uh, being uh, proposing six spaces where thirteen are required. And a, a variance with regard to the size of the parking stall, they are proposing a stall, parking stalls of nine by eighteen where ten by twenty are required. Uh, well, actually, that technically, I believe, is a waiver, even though I think it was identified as a variance in the testimony. The additional waivers are um, uh, pursuant to table three of the memorandum of the township planner. Um, is, there is a request for a waiver for providing benches and trash receptacles. Uh, for waiver from providing bike racks, a waiver for providing curb, uh, curbing. A waiver for the uh, driveway width where twenty feet is required, they're requesting less than twenty feet in width. Uh, where they're requesting a waiver for the sidewalks along, excuse me, sidewalks along the street. Though I, there was further testimony from our township engineer that this really uh, would be a request that has to come from the county as well. And they would have to uh, get approval from the county for, for not providing sidewalks. Uh, there was um, uh, with regard to a, a waiver for the lighting in the parking areas, there was testimony that they will be complying, at least I understand, it will be complying with the township's lighting ordinances and regulations. They were asking a waiver of outdoor uh, refuse area, uh, and we had testimony that they're going to keep the uh, refuse indoors and bringing it to the curb upon um, for pickup. Um, there was a, as I just spoke, uh, there was a request for a waiver for the parking stall size, uh, where ten by twenty is required and they're requesting a waiver to allow nine by eighteen. Uh, they are requesting a waiver for the setback for the parking areas where five feet is required and they are proposing zero feet. And lastly, a waiver for uh, the uh, concrete parking area, uh, they are proposing grave gravel. Uh, in addition, um, through the testimony this evening, um, I do, uh, there's a number of the conditions of approval. Uh, one dealing with the signage location. One, uh, the, the applicant did agree to provide a landscape buffer uh, all around the parking areas in response to the township planner's uh, report. The, uh, with regard to the type of signage, the applicant agrees to work with the township planner to come up with, uh, with an acceptable type of sign off of the township and the board. And that, oh wait. And that, oh wait, I'm sorry, there's one last condition I have, that they will be providing a replacement tree plan and will be working with the conservation officer to determine the type of trees and the replacement of any trees that need to be replaced due to any damage done due to the fill or for the work being performed. That is what I have from my notes. Vina or Nicole, I don't know if you have anything additional, but that's what I have for the variances, waivers, and conditions.
Vina or Nicole, do you have anything to add to that?
Joe, I think you covered everything. I would just request that the variance in the waiver table, like we talked before, be included as part of the resolution so that it's easier when we review the plans for compliance.
Absolutely, I have no problem with that.
Okay, now we'll open it to the public. If there's anyone from the public that needs to weigh in or has any questions or comments, we're going to post the numbers.
Chairwoman Cannon, I do not see any callers, but we should still wait.
Okay.
Vina, I would wait at least 45 seconds or so.
Yes.
Sometimes, based off the television, and then also based off of any of the YouTube feeds or the Facebook Live feed. Sometimes, it's a little, timing is off, it's not all the same.
Yes, that is right.
And, Miss Chairman, actually, while we're doing that, and I apologize for not raising it previously, but there is, since there is at least one variance being requested, we do should have some testimony from the applicant, normally from, you know, required to be done from a planner, but given the type of variance being requested, maybe at least we can have some testimony from the applicant in support of the variance, meaning testimony with regard to the C standards. Assume it's being requested either under C1 or C2 or both, but maybe we should have some testimony from the applicant regarding that.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor. Trey?
Yes.
Okay, so just referring to that, it's my understanding that, as Vina pointed out in her memo, this, the proposal is, for the proposed professional office is permitted in the zone. So as she points out correctly, use variance is not requested, but there are several bulk requirements that are being requested in the form of variances and/or pre-existing non-conformities. And if you could just address those and provide some support, and as Vina indicated in her testimony, that this, since this is a change from a non-conforming use to a conforming use, it's her belief that that advances the goals of the municipal land use law. So if you could just discuss that and support the positive and negative criteria for those variances, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Yeah, I would start with the positive criteria here. We can easily see that now we are complying with, not complying, but we are kind of in consistency with zoning EDO3 versus residential home, and all surrounding uses are getting commercial uses. So this would be a definitely more wise planning, that we will have, like no homeowner will be living here. Instead of that, we will have an office space like the other uses around, where they work from morning to evening. So that would be a change, as well as some changes, some upliftment we will do to the site by adding some more plantings, removing old trees, add some more new trees. So altogether, and we are not reducing a green space at the same time. So I would say that there is, there are many positive outcome out of this use, office use at this place. As far as negative, I don't see any.
Okay, very good. So you believe that in terms of the balance and supportive justification for the variances, that as you've indicated, appears the positive criteria clearly outweighs the negative, and you're comfortable that the variances can be granted appropriately under the standards as provided under municipal land use law, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have any further questions on that point, but thank you, Counselor, for raising that.
Yes.
Did we get any residents calling in or anybody calling in?
None.
Okay, has enough time elapsed, or should we continue to hold?
It's been, it's been over four minutes, Chairwoman.
Okay.
And there are no attendees to the meeting.
Okay, so we can move forward?
Yes.
All right, so unless anybody has any further comments or questions, we could take a motion regarding the application.
I'll move it.
Mr. Schmitz, you moved it and seconded by?
Casey.
Mr. Petty. Okay, roll call, please. Mr. DePalma?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Mamacas?
Yes.
Mr. Marucci?
Yes.
Mr. Schmitz?
Yes.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Chairwoman Cannon? Yes. Okay, the application has been approved. Good luck, and wish you the best. Does anyone else have anything to say, or we can call it a night? Hopefully, next month, we'll be back in person.
I just want to thank the board for your support of the application, and also, again, thank the staff for putting this Zoom meeting together. And we know it's not easy to get everybody to make the technology work, but we do greatly appreciate that.
They make it easy.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Thank you. Okay, if no one has anything to say, we'll call for a motion to Ms. Schmitz to move on.
I'll move it.
Second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Marucci, second by Mr. Lauer, all in agreement? Yes. Thanks, Vina.
Thank you.
And Nicole, great job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you all.
Good night, everyone. Stay safe.
Stay safe.
Stay safe.